We've had a few minutes of discussions. Thank you. You're welcome. I'm sorry I didn't catch it before.
So originally I had suggested 600 feet and I, you know, Jackson's place is right up the street from Becky and Murray. We always walk up there almost every day, but and that in my mind is clearly a place where you see Carth park taking pictures and spectacular view. The, but the red represents the 600 foot contour and the black line represents the 550 foot. Top gravel contour. The same is true for Lord Hill, which is at the end of the Guffel Road. Basically the little black dot inside the red line on the Lord Hill is where the old Galler Farmhouses.
Gotcha.
Familiar with that? You know, I don't know that a lot of people go up there to take pictures or not. I know Union Church holds its Easter sunrise service up there.
Beautiful view.
It is a beautiful view and. You know, because it's not a through road or even anymore. You know, that might be part of it, but anyway, that, that, you know, I thought a larger area should be incorporated where you actually, because you get a large, you get views beyond where the 600 foot total line is.
Yeah, me too. I don't, I don't have any objections to going from 600 to 550. None at all. So if that were the case, then, then in the language here, we, you know, where it's, you've included that and areas of bug rate accessing accessible by public road within an elevation above sea level equal or greater than 550 feet.
Right. One wordsmithing thing that I might suggest to the language that I have in my memo and this is because it goes back to. More accurately relates to the review criteria. more accurately relates to the review criteria by which we have to make our decision in your the existing review criteria in the ordinance is on that first, well, first full line, it's underlined. Starts recreation sites and resources. I would change that to recreation, scratch sites. And, and scenic resources, because that's the wording that's used in the in whatever article it is, five or whatever of the ordinance in terms of these are the, you know, what's in the findings of fact and law. That's the language that's used so that it would be read recreation and scenic resources.
I'm sorry, George, you lost me. Where are you?
The first line of, in my memo. On the first line. That's underlined. Find it.
So can you repeat then the change?
So it crossed out sites. And add the word scenic after and so would read recreation and scenic resources.
So can I throw out a hypothetical? And I don't know how this would fit in. If you're a bet, the golf course. People take pictures up there. Would, would that not be a recreation resource? I, I would think it would be so.
Also be a scenic resource.
It would be a scenic resource. So even though it's privately held, I think that would still be part of the consideration of.
Yeah, but it is a public space in that. You know, especially when it's not golf season.
Correct.
You know, my wife and I were walking up there earlier this week before golf started.
Right.
And we're not golfers, so and don't belong to the club.
Well, it is a gorgeous view.
And actually there's the golf course. It's a lot of public.
Oh, you're right.
Golf course.
Right. It is a public golf course.
So from, I think many angles, I think you, I think it passes a straight face test to say that that would be a spot in Belgrade, which would be included as a.
So here's an example. Christine and I came here to interview for the job. That's one of the places we were taken. Just to see how.
Well, that kind of.
Tells you something.
Yeah. So, yeah, so in addition to mine at Hill Road, we should probably add a reference to that.
Okay. So if we did that, who's?
The, the only thing. I mean, it's not publicly owned. It's open to the public for members. I, I just don't know how the owners of the golf course would feel about it.
Right. I was curious if by not mentioning that by name, because it's privately owned, publicly available, right? If still, just by referencing that is, to me, it falls under a scenic resource. At a minimum, these public recreation and scenic resources, to me, is a scenic resource.
What I don't know is can't recall, I mean, do this, I, I, you know, well, I looked on a, looked scanned the whole town on an online topographical maps. And because the ones I use for deer hunting are all ratty, torn and stuff like that, but the
Still gets lost.
And, and ancient too, I might add. The, what I don't, can't recall is if that little knoll there has a name. So we could reference it by name.
I think, I think there's a local name for that. Somebody used to live on top of that thing.
Right, right.
And I can't remember. It's a guy, I think, that used to run the campground for the town facilities.
Oh, my gosh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Good. So, so maybe if that we could consider using that name reference of that knob or hillside also.
So we're up.
I think so. All right, thank you. Thanks, George. So, but we definitely wanted to make sure to include mine at Hill Road, as we suggested. Right. And then quite likely the other reference that we're just talking about, that note. Okay, so that's under specific application requirements. And to be clear, we're striking references to things that are not in Belgrade, so. Right. So you probably caught all that, right? Like anything.
Yes, yes. And then we're adding, are we adding mine at Hill or mine Hill Road?
Mine at Hill Road, because I don't think there is a mine at Hill. Okay.
Can there be a mine at Hill Road without a mine at Hill?
I think there is.
You had to be at town meeting to understand.
Yeah.
Actually, I think I've heard of references.
Oh, you have? Oh, I didn't know that.
But anyway.
Yeah. So for now, mine and Hill Road, apparently. So we'll have to find out if there's actual reference.
Well, I wanted to know maybe before we get to the elders, that there's always a beautiful block of Canada East there.
Yeah, San Antonio Springs. I just saw a couple.
Yeah, yeah, which is pretty interesting. Yep.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. So look, I go 10, 15 to 20.
Wow. Um, Peter, I have a question for everybody. Mr. Juan talked about how these view shade analyses typically go out at least three miles and then only higher elevations from three to five miles. It's five miles being the maximum. There's nothing in DEP right to talks about this, but I didn't know it's somewhere in here. We should specify that that it should be a minimum of, you know, should go out a minimum of three, three miles. From the location of where the proposed solar facility is.
Yeah, why?
Yeah. I agree with, I will agree with that.
Well, I'm just repeating what he, you know. I mean, this, this is, yeah.
And how far is it from Howland Hill?
Well, the way I would suggest doing is a minimum of three miles.
Right.
Not a maximum. Yeah, I don't know the answer to your question.
Distance you want?
Three miles is quite a ways. I'd like to know how far it is. I mean, we got 550, which includes a lot of the top of how.
Right, yeah. I should probably mention that I did in my memo include Howland Hill because it's private. You know, there's a bunch of big houses up there, but there's no, you know, it's not publicly accessible, as best I can tell. I mean, I just looked at it on Google Earth, but.
Even though it's not publicly accessible, you can still see it from the lake.
Right.
It was still at 550.
I, I mean, so I'm jumping ahead a little bit, great, but I've also suggested later on, you know, under prohibitions that that. So if somebody put a solar farm up there, it would be visible from Great Pond. So my suggestion is that on the site, list of sites that I've suggested where solar farms would be prohibited, that it would be at elevations above 550 feet as well. So that would preclude Howland Hill.
Well, part of it.
It would, well, the top part of it, yeah. I mean, parts of, part of it's in Oakland, but, but that's facing the other direction. Wouldn't see that from Great Pond. Anyway, that, I only mentioned that because that was sort of my way of skipping that cat. But anyway, the, I, I just wanted to explain why I didn't include it in this list. As a viewpoint, because it didn't seem to me to meet that public standard.
But we could have included in a visual from seeing it from the pond, right?
Yeah.
I mean.
Or more importantly, you know, visible. It, it should be part of the, you know, what those homes up there can see from a nearby solar farm down below somewhere. I, I think that's why, you know, within whether it's three miles or we choose some other distance, but because that's, that's the way you have to look at it, I think.
I don't really want to see anything from the pond. And that's part of my property. My 76 acres into the mix too. I don't want to see the solar farm. I don't want to look at it from the pond. Where you can see it from the pond. So you can see it from Radiant Tower to North Bay, all the way around State Point over by Bear's Big Camps to see all that property. So I'm throwing my property into the mix as well, so. Yeah, as long as there's a stipulation that we can't see it from the pond, we're going to have, we'll have to do a three mile.
Yeah.
Minimum.
Yeah. Minimum. That's, I think it's a fair and reasonable suggestion to go with the three mile minimum.
Again, the objective mostly just to be having some baseline methodology standards.
Right.
Three miles and then 550.
Elevation.
Elevation.
Yeah. Because since the comprehensive plan doesn't list these. We, I think we need to list them in the ordinance.
Exactly.
So George did, with that language being inserted in the first sentence there to read a geographical representation of all areas within a minimum of three miles.
Yeah, someplace along there. Okay.
So just a time check for everybody. It's 6:45. So we, we have 15 minutes before, I think the patents are up next, right? On our agenda.
Yes.
So are we on the next page then?
Somebody else has some.
I do not. Does anybody else say anything? If not, this boogie, let's keep going down. So we're on, do we go through visuals simulations part? We're there.
I, I have some minor.
So with the memo that you provided, George, you had some, some edits that were made in there. Any revisions to those edits?
No.
Okay. So I like the languages is more active, you know, visual simulations are to be provided rather than should. Striking the reference of USSF, solar facilities. You strike the word thereby, then include and also allow butters. Strike the word primary before residential and strike the word structure for dwelling.
You know, we, we'd already decided that we wanted to use residential dwelling units and use the definition from the Schrölin zoning.
Yes. Yeah. And number two and all those things that are listed there.
We did actually already discuss those.
Yeah.
Yeah. But before we move on to that, in, in four little I've.
Oh, yeah.
I had one other thought about maybe, again, with the objective being to sort of firm this up a little bit in terms of who does what and how. Versus visual impact assessment must be prepared by a design professional trained. I was wondering if it would help sort of put some guardrails on this. That by a main licensed landscape architect or other design professional. So I, online, I look for companies in Maine that do this kind of work. The vast majority are landscape architecture firms that I, I found, I found quickly, I found eight. Two of them are GIS firms. So this wouldn't include them. If, you know, they are trained in this. I, I didn't look at any of their work products or anything like that, other than I did see some from Dewan, it turned out.
So, so, yeah, that's, I think that's adequate language that would allow for certified professionals. Don't have to be only landscape architects. It could be others, but having a cert, that's important.
Yeah. So read that again one more time, George.
Yeah, so in little four there, the visual impact assessment must be prepared by a, and insert main licensed landscape architect or other, so that it would read or other design professional.
All right. I got it. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Then we've talked about the additional submissions for number two, right?
Right. We talked about that last time.
Yeah.
Did Anthony, Anthony was here. Did you catch that A, is there twice?
Yes.
Can I, can I, before we go on, go back quickly to something on the first paragraph where we just talked about all the locations or whatever. Right after the small letter I in whatever, it says a visual and cardiographic, cartographic analysis, the next sentence down. It said refers to the visual from the geographic representation of all areas where the solar facility from its highest points is visible from the surrounding impact area. It says should be presented. Should doesn't mean much. Should that be must as well?
Yeah.
George wrote it so it's more.
It's more active, right? Less.
Doesn't mean anything.
No, it's just a recommendation.
I like that idea. Thanks. Good catch, Rich. Here we then down to development standards for approval. Which takes, I'm looking at the memo from George. So certainly using the K V cog model, but then to supplement that, include these things. So certainly using the K B cog model, but then um to supplement that include these things.
Yeah, so I'm suggesting that we have some citing prohibitions. On the premise that, I mean, I'm I'm actually may not sound like, but I'm actually a supporter of solar power, but I I think with any kind of. Project like this, there are places that are appropriate, there are places that are not appropriate. Where on one hand you can minimize. The negative impacts and on the other, you know. It it's much far far more difficult. And so, you know, the shoreline zone, I I don't believe they should have any. These larger um or these commercial facilities should be in the shoreline zone likewise for the village and and critical resource conservation districts. That have been met on. As a representative conference plants, map representing the conference plant. See areas of twenty percent. Or greater slope uh above sea level on. Not unlike in shoreline zone. Um and some Camden has a similar kind of requirement. Not. Not just for. For solar facilities, but for commercial development in general. Uh and then I I this is what I was trying to uh reference earlier, great. Um I I would suggest adding a D and that would be areas with an elevation above sea level of five hundred and fifty feet or greater. So this would that would capture. You know, the summit there by Jack Sutton's. Lord Hill and Howell Hill in North Belgrade, which a lot of people refer to Lord Hill as the highest point in Belgrade. It's not Howell.
Good point.
So it'd be shoreline zone um. You know, I keep going back to this. We've already included the lakes. All my lakes, sorry. We're not gonna.
All the lakes were listed uh earlier. Yeah, as a as a viewpoint, yeah, that's part of that analysis.
Should that be in the citing prohibitions or is that? Taking care of.
Well, you and I may disagree as we get down the line here a little bit. Uh Craig, on whether. Um this goes to the point uh how much of the solar facility can be visible? Be allowed. You, I I I understand your point. Uh it it should be zero. Uh and I I'd just like to have a discussion about that based on Mr. Dewan's. You know, suggestions, but but we're we aren't haven't gotten there yet. That's further down the list.
So certain from the lakes nine.
Not yet in the setting prohibition.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you can't. Install a solar facility in the. In the lake, but that's not what Craig's saying. He he's saying any place where it's visible from the lake. Whether to add that to the list. I guess I'm saying. Let's leave that to the 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 visual impact analysis.
Yeah, I I agree that there can be situations where you can see it somewhat since piece of it, but. I'm not sure that would be uh something that should throw the project down entirely.
Well, and and then there's also, we have to remember that there may be ways for them. To mitigate that too, so.
So let's see a little bit of a solar farm where we shouldn't be worried about that. So.
I hadn't thought of it that way.
I'm sorry, Craig, I didn't agree.
So if we're not worried about seeing a little bit of a solar farm. From the lake, if we're not worried about seeing a cell tower.
Um.
Be honest with you, seeing a cell tower doesn't bother me. Oh, doesn't mean either, but. What's that? Doesn't mean either, but. I'm just.
Yeah, no.
Right.
Hey, or or a wind tower.
Yeah. Right, so it sounds like what you're trying to show is like how how to be equitable in no matter if it's a solar or or this or that, if it's. It's the amount of what's being shown. If it's if it's uh if it's a huge amount, then that's very objectionable. If it's a little bit of a piece of it, then that might be comparable to seeing like a cell tower.
I mean, the hard part is this is all in the eye of the beholder.
Correct, yeah. You know.
George, I'm just curious on your uh suggestion of areas of twenty percent or greater slope. In your mind, did you did you propose that because of the aesthetic value, you know, it's more likely to be seen if it's on a slope or because of the potential for runoff?
Both.
Both, and we can't go without the house.
Not in the shoreline zone.
Do we know what the slope is? Because I know that's been a concern about the proposed project off the Oakland Road.
I don't know. I, to be honest with you, I've tried to stay ignorant of that project so that.
I was just curious.
My biases don't get entered into this discussion.
Yeah.
Good question.
I don't know the answer, but my thinking is probably not.
Yeah.
It's pretty flat generally. I don't know what it is right at the lake and stuff, but. I don't know that that's a very steep.
And generally speaking, there aren't that many. Twenty percent slopes in. Yeah, I mean, Howell Hill certainly be one, but.
Right down behind my mother's.
It's deep, bro. Yeah. So time check for everybody. It's like six fifty eight. Are we okay right here um that we have included? Item D under citing prohibitions, which includes. Or adds areas above five hundred and fifty feet above sea level. They say that. As you represented, George.
Yeah.
So we have four items in this.
Yeah, and 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 so it's great to already reference in addition to this side of the. Double map, then the Howland Hill side, which is on the opposite side. Illustrates what would be impacted there.
Okay, so I'm good with that, but I'm not good with. Say that's all we're gonna include. Yeah. Where we visit it and maybe include some some more.
Okay.
Before, yeah, but I'm good with everything we have with the D. But I'm not saying that's gonna be final.
Right.
There might be something else as we go along that we.
Absolutely.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
So you guys have a preference on section seven, whether or not to add those sudden prohibitions at the beginning of that section versus middle versus the end? Man, I mean, my intuition tells me just put it at the very beginning because this sort of practice thing.
Yeah, that would that would be my sense.
Mine too.
Somebody that's going through, okay, I, you know, let's think, I I might like to open, build one of these in Belgrade. Oh, no. Let's move on to a different channel.
I like that.
Could you, there are, in the town ordinances I've looked at, I haven't seen anything comparable. Where somebody, the town comes right out and says, these sites aren't appropriate.
Yeah. You know, in a lot of ways, I think it's quite fair to an applicant.
Well, it's a clear.
It's clear, it's it's clear.
And I have another question. So so George sent this around earlier saying, just to just double checking this over decommissioning. Language that we talked about previously. So we're just talking about sticking this right into the K B cog ordinance where in place of the the decommissioning language that they have.
Um. I can't speak for the others. Uh I mean, I looked at it and it it, you know, that's what I recall us citing upon, but you know, I don't, I can't speak for anybody else.
Yeah, you're right about that. I mean, the the group did agree that this was gonna be our decommission language. I just wanted to double check to make sure, since there's a section in the K B cog template. About decommission, that it's just a matter of thinking what you guys already proved is putting it in that spot.
That is my exact collection. Let me do that, that. And George has spoken what he thought. I'm telling you what I'm thinking. Does that make sense with everybody else?
Yeah. Quite another exactly, but if we all approve of it, yes.
Well, if 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 it will make you feel more comfortable, um just knowing that we're heading in that direction, we can make an official. You know, vote on that, so it's minuteed if you like at another time, but I think just knowing the direction that we're going, I think with taking that language out of.
So maybe give everyone a chance to just re-review that again, hold on it the next week.
Yeah, yeah, can that work?
Yeah, okay.
Just knowing that the intention knows, it's like knowing where we're going is really helpful.
The one thing I did pick up on is when the town attorney reviewed the subdivision ordinance and the financials there. He had recommended we eliminate performance bonds.
That's right.
And.
Okay, I'll go back. I'll go back and I'll pair it that way.
Yeah, yeah, I I think you'd. Reparable letter of credit instead.
Good, excellent point. Yeah, that was in an email, right, from the town.
Peter, if I may suggest before we move on to the patents, and I know they're waiting in the uh in in the queue here, um but uh maybe just for. Cleanness, if we could um just deal with the other prohibitions so that then we have a nice clean break.
Oh, okay.
Where to start um.
So other prohibitions are items. Under two.
Yeah.
A and B.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So patents will will be right with you. We're almost there. There, thanks for your patience. Okay, so yeah, let's do this. So other prohibitions that are listed here, the development or construction of solar concentrating power plants are prohibited. As was suggested, and B transformers and other electrical equipment using halogen or PCB oils as coolants are prohibited.
Um speaking to the the B first, uh both of those, if they spill or hazardous, hazardous waste. Um some transformers still actually use PCB oils as hard as that is to believe. Um including the ones you see up on the poles or the old ones. There's still some of those kicking around, but um the uh. And and so, you know, you you need to be concerned about. Alter, there are viable alternatives, mineral oil being the principal one. With regard to A, um. Though those kind of so-called concentrating uh power plants are the ones that. You see oftentimes more in arid locations like in California, actually, sub Saharan Africa of all places where they. Concentrate with mirrors and basically turn water to steam. Use a lot of water. Um they're the ones that have some potential for um disorienting or um even hurting birds. Um but they use an incredible amount of water and, you know, the it's just not a technology at all. I I mean, there are none in New England. There may never be any in New England. I I I don't know. Uh. The only ones I could find were in the southwest.
Seem kind of strange. They use a lot of water, but most of them are found.
Yeah, no, exactly. Or like I said, in in the Sahara, you know, where it's not like they got water to burn.
So so at least if we list these, even if it's unlikely, then we're saying, okay, these types are not to be part of.
And there are some other towns that have that a similar kind of requirement.
Excellent. So are we in agreement that the other prohibitions should also be included here then? Yeah, okay, if we like that, then are we okay then to wrap up the prohibitions part? Then. When we meet again. We'll be picking up. From that point going forward. Should be item three. Okay, yes, Anthony.
So I put a memo on your desk. You can take a look at it, proposing a timeline. You don't need to talk about tonight, talk about the next meeting. Of how we get from here to November eighth, which will be election day, which we want this on the ballot.
Yeah.
But the probably the most important information is the last poll. Uh in order to make this timeline work, you would have to complete your work on this order, June sixteenth, that's four meetings from now. So I know later in the meeting, you're gonna talk about the possibilities, some special meetings now. Maybe one thing to consider is if these are gonna be more than four meetings, it's. Especially simply to work on solar.
Yeah.
And then lastly, as you guys all know by now, my last day as town manager will be May thirty first. Uh however, I'm willing to volunteer my services to the planning board to help you guys through this project, the solar ordinance. Uh but I do have a condition, that is that uh. My support and any comments that I might make would be just welcome as a consensus of your.
Thank you. I really appreciate the offer and I would welcome.
Who are involved. I just want everyone to feel that way. If if they don't, no hard feelings on my part.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to.
Right, yeah, no.
I feel pretty sure.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
All right. I'm out.
All right. I Tyler.
The show's about to begin.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Good, thank you. Oh, okay. Patent family, I think I think I still see you there. Thanks for your patience as we get through this. Um you're you're our next uh order of business here, which is the shoreline application that you have presented to us before. The location is at two nine four Timberpoint Road. Map H A lot fifteen. The purpose is to change the garage roof. To a peaked roof to accommodate two bunks and a bathroom. This is a non-conforming lot and a non-conforming structure. No change to the footprint. And Richard, thanks for helping out. Um so I'm just kind of going back to the application, just one second. Everybody have that, yeah, packet. Here it is. And. See. Richard, could you help us out here? Uh I'm seeing both the original, which that's a good way to do it, right? Because we have the original. Then you go to the corrected version and we show what um values were changed based on our last conversation with the patents. Right? So um at at this point, and were the patents able to talk with you about what was expected?
Uh yeah, we we spoke uh mostly being, you know, I mean. We stated, and so originally on their original application, they had proposed square or student presence where footage through sixty square feet and proposed seven twenty because. They thought they would double. Footprint, however, they're not.
Right.
Doubled it at all, so that was corrected on corrected version. And I'm thinking that because they're putting two bunks. In the. Upstairs of the show. Perhaps that's why they had a bed, however, there's no plumbing in.
Okay.
Um so.
To the best of my knowledge, the bedroom does not require plumbing.
Right.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I I'm I'm with you. So that way we go on number six where it says on the original, where it says present number of bedrooms, two. Beds to be added, zero.
Right.
Uh then on the corrected version, we go to two and one.
Right, because they're including the box.
Right.
Yes.
Uh meanwhile, I think everything else remains the same.
I mean, was the same and as I recall, everything was acceptable. It matched the high requirements. It met the high requirements. They've seen those couple of corrections.
So, so Sarah, you have a question for the applicants or Richard?
Uh, no, the, the, uh, the comment about the application.
Okay.
On item number six. Uh, it asked. When did you purchase the property within the shoreline zone and, uh, it calls for a month and year. So originally was, we knew that it was November. But now the new application only says the year was purchased. So we only, you gotta, we just gotta have the November.
Yeah, so originally it was eleven nineteen, it should stay eleven per the reading of this.
Can we just add the eleven there?
No.
So Patton family, so Patton family who are asking about is, um, on the original, um, application. On item number six, when it asks when the purchase was property, when the. Property was purchased within the shoreline, the answer was eleven nineteen. On the corrected version, and, and that's what we're expecting is a month and year. On the corrected version, it just says two thousand nineteen. By reference, we're still saying this November of two thousand.
Correct.
Alright, thanks. I'm sorry to be a stickler for details, but it's, it's an important thing. So for housekeeping, Richard, uh. Yep, I think so. That would be good. Any other questions, Sarah? George?
I, I would just note that if you look at the, uh, surface wastewater disposal system application, uh. That was, uh, approved by Gary Fuller on eleven twenty-six nineteen. So. Since that whole section deals really with wastewater, uh, you know, it's shortly thereafter. That it was, uh, this new system was designed.
Good point. So by referencing that, that.
Yeah, and, and I, I would also note that it was designed for three bedrooms. And now we have a total of three bedrooms.
Right.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Craig pointed that out last when we talked with the applicants, I, I believe. Okay, uh, does anybody else have any other questions for the applicant? Any other questions about the application in general?
Not a question, just a comment that, uh, if we approve this, it probably will be this. A condition that this thing not ever be, I say ever, not be converted to dwelling.
To what?
A dwelling.
No.
Yeah, no.
But we're allowed, so we, as I understand it, we're allowed to put beds up there and a bathroom, correct? Or that's what you're voting on?
I'm not sure if you heard Rich, but he said, uh, so no cooking facilities.
Correct, correct.
Right.
Heads up there. No problem, uh, because the septic system is designed for three bedrooms. If you had. Fluent going from that area to the septic system.
It's, it's just, uh, the guest room, basically.
Understood, but we're just going by the definition of a dwelling unit, which is an important thing.
Fine, yeah, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you. So, so, um, so, so Rich Baker, I think that's maybe a probably a good thing, you know, maybe that's a standard condition. But whatever the case may be, I think it's noted for this one to go forward. So, um, uh, we're okay to move ahead. Uh, in my mind, I think we're going, going into the findings of fact and conclusions of law aspect. So hang with us. We're gonna get through this.
Uh, I don't know whether it. I'm just thinking of saving the town photocopying. Lately, they, both of those have been in the back. To each of us. Maybe we do need to have it, but it seems to me that we go through it. I'm not sure it's necessary for us to have ten pages of application types.
He's talking about photocopying stuff.
Well, I'd say if you just, if you guys maintain your own copies, you can follow along.
Yeah, that would be good. It's a good suggestion. So, so in this case, I will write on one copy, provide it to the CEO. Uh, and or the front office, however it's gonna go. And then maybe if the rest of people wanna just keep a copy of the. Uh, of this, so we can follow along each time. That would then save some, some.
So the only copy that would be needed here at the meeting would be yours.
Right, right. Yep, yep, precisely. So.
Yeah, oh, that's a good idea. Right, you guys have copies or?
I have copies right now, but you know, so I mean, we got pictures on one side.
Okay, so I'll make everybody a copy with three, three.
All right, so we're going through the findings of fact and conclusions of law. Applicant is George Patton, address two nine four Timber Point. Road tax map eight A lot fifteen. Uh, the applicant finds on, on today's date, which is four twenty. And the project details change, changing the garage roof. Okay, uh, the application was, was presented to the playing board on. This is the second time, correct?
Yes.
First time was back on. Okay, thank you. Bless you. And today's date was four twenty-one, twenty-two. These findings affecting conclusions of law were developed in conjunction with the consideration of the application permit. The standard language reviews has been, um, uh, applications submitted. How's it go again? Application material.
Application, uh, submissions and.
And, uh.
The public record.
Yeah, that's it. All right, so starting at number two, um, uh, conclusions of law. So based upon the application materials. Testimony, statements and evidence, documents and other materials submitted to it. And the above findings affect the Doug Gray Planning Board. Finds the project is. Permitted under section fourteen, table one in the ordinance. And further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable, applicable provisions in section sixteen D of the ordinance. So, um, so for the patents, uh, please bear with us. We'll go through a number of these things that we will vote on. And we'll do a roll call vote for each one. And, and then there's another one we do a roll call vote for a number of them. So you'll see it as we go through it. I just wanna let you know, it's, it's not just an up or down thing. You have to go through a, a list.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, so that num- number one, um, that it will maintain safe, safe and helpful conditions. So, um, Sarah, Sarah, you've not missed anything. We're just going through, um.
I'm sorry.
Understood. So that we're on that this will maintain safe and healthy conditions. So by a vote, the board that this standard was met. So safe and helpful conditions, so, um, all those in favor. So Craig. And Sarah?
Yes.
George, yes. And with us, and I just wanna make sure I'm asking the right question. We have a quorum.
With Rich.
With. What's that? Okay, alright, awesome.
Sorry.
Uh, thank you. So Rich?
Yes.
Yes, and I too am in favor. So that's five in favor and none opposed. Two, will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. By a vote, the board found this statement was met. Chris, Sarah?
Yes.
George? I two, five in favor, none opposed. Number three, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater, wastewater. So by a vote, the board found this standard was met. So Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed. Uh, four, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life. Uh, bird or other wildlife habitat. The vote, by a vote, the board found this standard was met. Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I two in favor, five in favor and none opposed. That five will conserve shore cover in visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. So Craig? Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich? Yeah, five in favor, none opposed. Uh, six, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in a comprehensive plan. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. So Craig, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed. Uh, that seven will avoid problems associated with flood plain development and use. By a vote, the board found this standard was met. Craig? Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed. Number eight is a, uh, whole slug of stuff, um, many of which will not be applicable. And. As you'll see, as we go through this, um, oh, this is relative to section fifteen land use standards. So number eight is in performance. So, so we'll go through all these things, but the question is. By a vote, the board found this standard was met based on evidence in the record and further as follows. So that A. Minimum lot standards. I would say NA, yeah, thank you. Uh, B, principal and accessory structures. So I'm just gonna say yes. Uh, campgrounds. Individual, D, individual private campsites. E, commercial and industrial uses. F, parking areas. G, roads and driveways. H, signs. I, stormwater runoff. If I say yes, uh, C, conditions, would that be acceptable? J, septic waste disposal system. I would say yes.
Yes.
K, essential services. L, mineral exploration and extraction. M, agriculture. N, timber harvesting and land management roads. O, clearing or removal of vegetation for activities. Other than timber harvesting. P, hazard trees, storm damaged trees and dead tree removal. Q, exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements. R, revegetation requirements. S, erosion and sedimentation control. T, shoreline stabilization. U, soils.
Yes, based on for something.
I'm gonna actually use that same word, based on septic, septic design. Can I say that? Uh, V, water quality. Would it be yes?
Things where, you know, water quality is being concerned or protected.
I would.
And I think technically it, it comes under it because we're doing something that can change so much.
And I agree. I'm gonna say yes and then C conditions. Uh, W, historical and archaeological sites. X, resource protection. Uh, so under, so Patton family, so, um, we have a standard condition. I'll read it just so you hear it once anyway, right? Um, can, uh, manage stormwater runoff from a new or expanded structure in accordance with section fifteen I. Of the Doug Ridge Shoreland zoning ordinance and the main DEP's best management practices as outlined in the conserve. Conservation practices for homeowners publication. Um, such measures are to be put in place prior to building use. So not, please note that this is a standard condition. That applies to all permits unless the board deems it unnecessary. So, I, I, does there, does anybody, uh, think that this is not applicable? Right, I, so, so that's our standard conditions. This would still apply in your case as we talked about, um, this. Um, and I'm sensing another condition, Rich, that, that we may want to include in this one. Is that correct still? Uh, do you wanna take a stab at trying to just give me a sentence that I could?
You know, with, with, with the condition that, uh.
Yeah.
I forgot all about what the condition was.
Yeah, when we were talking about it, it was to not become a dwelling unit. It would, it would have become a dwelling. By not adding a bathroom?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, cook, cooking facilities, decent pro, thank you, cooking facilities.
Prove the project. Provided that it's not become a residential dwelling unit specifically that no cooking facilities. Shall be established.
So provided that it not become a dwelling unit specifically. By not adding cooking facilities?
Yes.
I'll read it. So provided that it not become a dwelling unit specifically by not adding cooking facilities. So we have two conditions. One's the standard one and the second one is when we just talked about with the dwelling unit. Aspect.
Now, do we have to go back to eight and bolden it?
Yes, that, I think that's a good way to do it. And then we can vote on the whole thing, okay? So, um, so based on eight, which is the. Twenty-five or so different things, most of which are NA, but we had a couple of guesses. One was stormwater runoff. Another was septic waste disposal. Another one was principal and accessory structures. Soils and water quality. So we had five. That applied. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Okay. So, uh, by a vote, the board found that this standard, this is about land use standards, was met based on the evidence in the, in the record and further as follows. So by a vote, that this was met. Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I two them in favor. So that's five in favor and none opposed. Then, we go to the whole application. And just wanna make sure we, like, I'm very clear then also with the patents. So, um, so we're gonna vote on this application right now. Um, you've heard us go through the entire thing so far. There are the two, um, conditions. One is about the stormwater runoff, which I know you're very clear about. And the other one is about the dwelling unit, which we discussed tonight. So y'all, are you good with that so far?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, three, decision. So based on the above findings affecting conclusions of law on today's date, which is four twenty-four. Two, that the town of Belgrade approved by a vote, this is where we vote. So, all those in, that, all those in favor of this. So Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed. The shoreline permit application of George Patton. With the above conditions, which we just discussed, and at a meeting on. To develop these findings affecting conclusions of law and adopted these findings on today's date. Two. Two, so. This has been approved, and it will be mailed to you. Um, please, uh, I, I can't speak for Richard's availability, but if you have any questions, I would want to make sure to, to direct anything to him, and he'd be able to communicate about what's going on. So, I wish you the very best, Rick.
Thank you very much for your dealing with this.
Yeah, thank you all.
Very welcome.
You're very welcome.
It was a very nice application that you put together. We really appreciate your time and attention to detail. Really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Enjoy your camp.
Yes.
We, we do.
We'll see you here soon.
Alright, righto.
Thank you. Alright, so, uh, so Richard, I have what I've written on. Can I just give that to you right now? And, um, the application, which I don't have.
I, I have the original.
So we'll have to sign that application. Tyler, thanks for hanging in there with us. We're, we're getting. Standby.
Those and Jane Doe.
Yep, so this will go with that if I can send it to you for a second. And this is the original. The corrected original.
Yes.
So today's for twenty-one, twenty-two planning board. Sarah, do you mind if I just start to my left, go to Craig next? And then we go to you. You're right there. Thank you, sir. No, I'm not opposed at all, not opposed. I'll be right back. I need to buy a break for a second.
So we currently starting fly fishing.
Make sure my hands are drying up.
More something eaten up regular. Gonna put it on the sale. I did.
Wilson had that many years before you.
Right.
Yeah. Remember you always saying you couldn't wait to get the bigger cats? Well, for what you came from too. From what you go to. Cause then it's like out of the SUV.
Getting up there. Yes, awesome to deal with.
Yeah.
God, this is all, this is all.
I haven't had any issues with it. As far as buying, no pressure. He's like, I said, well, give me a night to think about it. He's like, yeah, you can tell you home with it. I said, ah, I'd love to, but my flowers broken and I mean, I have my truck.
Yeah.
Someone was working on my pile that night. And I said, oh, what did I do? But, um, no, they were very good.
More dominating the most is this.
Yeah.
Can't say that about every car of yours.
I know, it's no sales pitch really. Well, this is what it is. This is a package. You know, you know, someone was looking at it. So I called the office and well, we're showing it tonight. So it doesn't sell, we'll give you a call. Said at four thirty that night, I'm gonna call. I said, no, that's all. But yeah, I'll be up in the morning. They gave me the night to think about it. No pressure, no sales pitch. This is what it is.
It's good.
Take it for a ride, see you in a while.
Yep, I, I'd recommend.
I couldn't.
I'd recommend it to anybody.
Yeah.
For a variety of reasons. No, I haven't actually, but, but I've gotten to know them a little bit more because they're relative of relatives. So, you know, we see them in different places.
I dealt with Josh Atwood. Very good. Yep, it was.
Good, excellent.
You're harder and harder to find.
Tis. Alrighty, so Tyler. Yeah, let's get on to yours, shall we? So, so I think we have your application here in front of us, do we? We have there.
There's not really an application.
Right.
Is it just a drawing?
Yes, just. There's copies up there. Peter has the chocolate, the big one. That's for the patents. The roll up ones, you're right. Yeah, that's Tyler.
So this is the patents, I don't wanna lose this.
Is that the original?
For the patents?
Oh, that's patent.
Yeah, this patent, this is not the original Tyler's. He didn't trust me with it, so.
Would you?
I don't know why you guys know who's handling this stuff.
You have two here. Yeah, you wanna touch what you're playing?
Yeah, so looking to split lot fourteen, which is the large field that's visible from eight and eleven, uh, in the two lots. So looking to sell the house that's newly constructed, visible from the road on the one point eight acre lot, possibly the entire fourteen plus acre parcel. And so it's when I met with Gary, when I bought this entire subdivision from Donham in the summer, when it was approved in oh four, it was written that lots one, fourteen, and nine could be further subdivided. I suspect they always had the intent of someone breaking them up, and they left them as large pieces, uh, so it could be accomplished. And when I met with Gary out there, um, reading the, reading the ordinance, knowing that, uh, there's a line in there that subdivisions need planning board approval to be further split. He said that's, uh, only within the five year lookback. So that was the, he said, if you look back further than that, almost every parcel in town was at once. And part of a subdivision. So where do we draw the line? And so what I'm doing here is no different than, you know, what I would just do with my survey or the registry if it hadn't been a part of a approved subdivision in oh four. I'm not looking to do another subdivision or create any more than those two lots.
So it's fourteen A that you're splitting off?
Correct.
And the, the house that you can see from the road, is that on lot eleven?
That is on lot fourteen A.
Oh, oh, that's on fourteen A. Oh, sorry, I, I missed it.
Yeah.
And the num, so just to be fair, so then the numbering of the lots as you went along from eight and eleven, along dire lane.
Let me show you, I have the subdivision. It was too large.
I do recall this when we did it with.
Yeah, you were, yeah, you were there.
Yes, sir.
You're the only one that was there.
Quite, quite rare to have a subdivision that there hasn't been developed. But this is lot fourteen, you got blown up for scales, so as you drive in dire lane, yeah.
Big, not a big one there.
Yeah. So lots two through thirteen, exclusive of nine, are restricted from any further subdivision. It's the common lot.
Oh, duh.
Yeah, so I think the common lot goes down to the railroad tracks.
Yep.
Room's already in there.
Yeah, paved road, underground utilities, all built to town spec, never taken over, of course. Yeah. And you can see, you know, relative to Pineau Drive, which was established in the late eighties and built up to the nineties. You know, just on lot one of that or states, they had one, two, three, four, five lots that back up to that one. So it's.
Right.
Did I see a pad or some kind of a landing area, if you will, for either materials or something?
Yeah, exactly. We might build a house. There's a local fellow here that would like a house built on that front corner. And, uh, that was the plan to start the spring until material prices continued to buy and exceeded his budget, unfortunately. So we're actually, we have the foundation board, born second floor on lot three tomorrow morning. That's the next. And that's by having the entire development, we're staggering starts and, you know, these folks won't have tailgate banging, nails and compression running all day. We'll be back here, and then we may go to this one, and we may come back up here. So it just makes the experience that much better for the folks that live there. And I have the same interest as anyone who buys into development because I own adjacent property. So the better I do it, the better. And the, the big motivating factor for a smaller lot here, the buyers that built this house on spec were traveled. There was a few real interesting parties. I, I met with a few of them. The folks who are under contract, whether two young doctors moving from out of state, they have contracts in the hospital. And the idea of having essentially a farm here, you know, fifteen acres of rolling fields was just so overwhelming. And I found that with most buyers, that that's not what they want. They like, you know, the aesthetics, they like the field, but the idea of having to mow it three times a year, find a farmer to hay it. It just was, was too much. And, and I have interest in keeping this maintained. That's why I'm keeping that offer with the roads that I can keep it mowed. And, uh, kinda this sets the tone for all future development out back.
It's interesting. I would be just the opposite. I would, you know.
You and me both, right? You know, it's the, the market rate.
Yeah.
Folks that are buying here.
If somebody's moved from Boston to wherever, you know.
Well, and that's just it. This is huge. I mean, one point eight when we walked the progress. Oh my gosh, I'd never imagined having a piece of. Oh, how much more are they gonna ask for, you know?
So lots one. I'm sorry, one, nine, and fourteen can be divided.
Correct. Yep, that's the first note. Obviously, we wanted to use frontage on dire lane. That's why we have the two hundred and one feet there. The access is off of dire lane.
Forgot about the, uh, original name of the, uh, adjoining subdivision. I, I was on the plane. That was my first day on the plane. Planning board. They actually brought, uh, Jack and, um, Mark brought in their sign with a beaver and, you know, a cut tree or something to the planning board meeting. It was just too funny.
They changed the name. No, in this case here. If we approve it, we do it with a letter, and yeah, that's a whole application.
Um, I think we just need to approve the plan, don't we?
That was my understanding from my lawyer. That's why they prepared that on the twenty pound paper, for signatures. It just has to be recorded.
I think that makes sense.
And is that your understanding, Richard?
Yes, uh, exactly what Tyler just said. My understanding is just need to sign the, that paper. And just, uh, make sure it gets assessed, so the assessor can do his work.
I mean, as long as we end up with one of the signed copies
Correct.
in our file.
Right.
Comfiled, and that becomes a document.
And I think they decide any of the copies that are up here, and it'll work for our filing purposes. And I think that's another reason why we really wasn't an application involved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kind of like what we did with the beers one last time.
Yeah.
We just signed it.
I mean, at most, maybe a letter or something, but not, not an application.
Right.
So Tyler, where are you at with the, uh, a lot of brush from the land? I call it a dump.
Where are we at? Yeah, so that was, that was my plan to pursue that until this opportunity presented itself. I was after, uh, Dawn for many years with interest to buy this and as many other folks were, and we never were able to strike a deal, and he didn't like the idea of piecemeal rots. I'd sort of written it off as, as an opportunity altogether. Got an email. Here we are. So that's just on hold. Well, I've got the next eight years of my life planned out right here. Which is, which is great.
And you should all develop the.
That's right, that's right. That'll be even more.
Okay, so it's fourteen being divided to lots. That's in line with the note that's here.
We have very cool projects, I'll tell you that.
Thank you.
Right in town.
Okay, so that's the case. What we're doing basically is approving applying changes on one lot, right?
This is not unsimilar to what we did for the subdivision on West Road.
Precisely, yeah. So.
Did you need to include some sort of letter with that subdivision since I wasn't?
Well, it, it was just a cover letter for the drawing. But, you know, I mean, the. But, you know, I mean, the bottom line is the signed drawing being in the project file.
Right, right.
For reference. I mean, to be at, at the registry of deeds is, that's legally what's important.
Right. I used to know if I needed to draft up something for.
No.
He, he has a little here actually.
Yeah, I agree, Sarah. I think everything through here would hit signatures.
I'm fine.
By signing, we're, we're committing to this.
I mean, if, if, if it was something more complex.
Right.
You know, where, um, I can't even think, uh, a whole bunch of lots being created or, uh, new lots being created or, uh, redesign of the road location or, or something like that, that might be a different matter, but.
This is pretty scary stuff, yeah. So I think we, the signatures on the, what do you call it? Twenty. Well, they're not doing the mylaws anymore. So this just can't have a crease. It's, it's just special paper that the registry requires. That's, that's why he wouldn't let me hold it.
Do you blame him?
No. I told you that. And I, and I think that for our records, if we want to sign this one, the one Sarah has, whatever, whatever works, because I had.
Right, we need to keep one, I, I think.
Yeah, we definitely do.
Yeah, we definitely. Yeah, we could sign, I'll take, I'll keep one. You guys, uh, if we could sign three, that would be ideal.
Sure. I, I know I have one to share. So in terms of, um, administering this aspect of it, this is nothing else going on except approving line changes on the paper. I think we want to make sure some facts are given to Richard so that we just need to have a cover letter that says on this table, we include this. And maybe reference the other.
Oh, I think, yeah, I, I don't even know if we need to do that. When I was talking about a cover letter, I was talking about like other subdivision, uh, subdivision owners have in the past with the, they've submitted the drawing and they'd be just a short cover letter saying, I'd like to establish, I'd like to take this lot and divide it up into two or whatever, you know? That, that's what the people did, uh, with regard to, um, the subdivision on the West Road.
Also, in this case.
That email was nice. A lot we shared that.
I didn't know. I, I.
Yeah.
Excer- excerpt, I wouldn't put it into our agenda, but I'd share the whole.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I, I mean, most importantly is just for us to have the, the approved, in my view, the approved drawing in the project file.
I would agree. Um, so I guess at this point, there's nothing else to do other than devote to prove it. That's all I can think of. So would someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion on establishment of lot fourteen A.
Perfect. In second, any more discussion? So we'll call votes for all those in favor of the creation of lot fourteen A on the subdivision. In favor, so Craig.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Rich. I to him in favor. So that's five in favor, none opposed. Fourteen A is in play. All right, so let us sign, um, you want three things signed, correct?
Yes.
And so would that be one, probably the most important for you, Freddy? Do everybody have like a sharpie? Well, no, you can borrow this one if you want.
Even though it's not a mylaws. I don't know, they just use. They're longer than science and they do approve it.
We don't have, we have extra sharpies.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to your question. I mean, that was, I thought the reason for the sharpie would, so that it would stay on.
I know. That's, that's really my brother.
Yeah, that, that is the reason.
Uh, now.
Oh, I don't know. We're using the sharpie on paper. Whether we have to or not.
One would sit them up and go around all them.
Okay.
So it hasn't had the same spot.
True, true. Is there a case sign for that one? That's the one that he needs. Then we sign these other three. There, right?
Tyler? I actually, that's one going to let you remind us, I didn't want to provide whatever to that.
Okay, so and then we need one for the town file.
Yeah.
It's pretty close to there.
So my lawyers gone.
Yeah, apparently.
End of an era that extended back probably to the nineteen twenties.
I know, right? I mean, at that time it must have done itself.
Whenever, yeah, maybe, maybe since then, actually.
Yeah.
Not a lot of plastic back then. Make light, because they make it out of make light. My first stint on, coming back to the eighties, uh, involved me in the subdivision of the old building. And, yeah.
It's like.
It's like parchment paper.
Back when it was useful. Place went out of business because it kind of, parchment paper kind of went out.
And, you know, and nobody, the judge kind of liked the reason. I, I can't figure this out.
Who could with a straight case, right?
And when you've got.
And you're setting up the, uh, the.
Survey records.
Setting sites for you guys.
So. Three and a half weeks. Yeah, we have, yeah, every appraisal, um, in four weeks. Yeah, so it was a big relief for sure.
George, he looks handsome.
Thank you.
Next.
Next. That was the goal. Thanks, Frank.
Somebody found an individual.
Yeah, so those came, uh, these are babies came in a burn off place that David Peppers landed off the West Road. And then he.
That's cool.
It is cool.
They were my, uh, we said, uh, You may get a chance to turn. Woo. I can't say.
An additional workforce.
Caverns just before the wet.
More trees there. Now, see them just before you get to.
Tyler, did you want yet another one that we signed an extra?
How, how long was it? Southern May still does hand even Renaissance timbers.
So are you looking for used ones or?
Old ones, yeah.
That was fresh from me before he was in action, but he was in town here. But not old ones. Anyway.
That, that'd love to. Yeah. How long's that stuff keep? Five more, some more. Yeah.
All right. I tell you, you're in business, right?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Best wishes. Go forward. I think for the plan, we have minutes to go. Well, CEO update.
Yes.
Minutes and then we'll probably want to talk about a timeline. All right. Richard, do you have any updates?
Yes. So I'm going to update you on the applications that I have. I'm going to give you a brief summary of each very quickly. I was having some issues with the, the Palmer one that I have and, uh, Mr. Palmer came in yesterday and we sat down and he had originally, uh, printed an application a while back, but had done nothing with it and he had inadvertently interpend, implying some of the paperwork with the new stuff. So I was all confused. So he came in and straightened me out. So, um, this is, uh, on the Gables End Road. He wants to add an addition off the back of the house to create a master bed and bath. No change to number of bedrooms.
Remember that first application?
So that one, the slisters are on High Beach Road. They want to run a rate there. Can't, they want to, uh, add a garage and remove and relocate the existing shed beyond the hundred foot setback.
And had, I think we've seen them before, but then he, yeah, tabled it or something?
It seems as though that is correct.
Okay.
And I've got corrections on this application, so I, I dare say you're correct. And, uh, we have a lot of these, I think, a little simpler. This one is on Long Pond Drive, uh, remove bunkhouse to rebuild the exact, to the exact same specifications. Uh, I believe this is the one that it got destroyed by a tree. And so they're just going to rebuild the same exact one. And then uh, the, the beers is, uh, which we just dealt with the subdivision. Now that they're, they are no longer a subdivision. Uh, Mr. Beers just wants to change his roof line, which slopes towards the water to slope away from the water. Um, and he's right on the book. Pretty much. Uh, Kathleen Thompson Architects, uh, over on Alfon Lane, Great One. They want to demolish the existing cottage, down the foundation, rebuild it, same exact footprint. Mr. Nesevsky, forty seven Random Way, wants to build a single family dwelling with a two car attached garage, patio all beyond the hundred foot mark. So, but it is shoreline still considered. Mr. Welch, one fifty one Lynch Cove, uh, wants to build a ramp, which we had talked about via email. Uh, for entry into the cottage, they're about twenty five feet from the water. Uh, his parents own the cottage and are having a hard time with stairs. He wants to build them a ramp, uh, six by six landing and I believe it's like a fifty foot ramp or something like that. And lastly, Mr. Prue on Castleview Road wants to add a twelve by sixteen shed on gravel. Add beyond a hundred foot water. So as you can see, all of these are pretty similar, especially one beyond a hundred feet.
Some of these things, I don't know whether they, I sent it to everybody's, uh, with wire to mention, but you know, if, if we're going to get bogged down and, uh, applications where they get backed up for the year. I know we're taking amendment to the ordinance, but there's, would be no problem with DDP, at least that unless they change policies since I was there, but, you know, coming up with those initially thinking that you know, you can amend the ordinance to say that, uh, allowing a code officer to deal with essentially decks and ramps like this, or something the effect of, uh, allowing for additions to principal structures that involve no walls and are not being proposed closer to the water. So that Richard could deal with, uh, uh, the ramp. If somebody wanted to build a deck on the side of the structure, wouldn't have to come to the planning board or even accessory structures, uh, that are beyond a hundred feet or something. Certain things that the code officer shouldn't, what it is, qualified to i- issue a permit, uh, without running through the planning board. Simple. I know, that would have cut down on probably three of those.
Yeah.
Applications.
So that's, that's probably a good place to get to for us.
It's not gonna have no ride.
Right? Because we'd have to amend the ordinance and go to the board and all that sort of stuff and.
That, that's not part of our ordinance.
Not now.
The, uh, Rich, you had in that email exchange, it indicated that, there was something in statute that, that addressed with handicapped accessible ramps or access ramps. And I couldn't find a pleasant thing in there, but.
It might not, I said title thirty eight. It may be in the general municipal law, or some title thirty or something. Might be in title thirty.
I had, I had read somewhere as well.
Well, and that was my recollection that there was either an exemption or a limited exemption.
Yeah, the statute says a town may, uh, and, and I don't, the thing I don't know is whether it says a town may by way of ordinance. I don't think it says that. I think it says it just outright, town may allow for this ramp, uh, that's necessary to gain entrance to the structure.
Yeah, does it still require an permit or?
I would say it does require.
Okay.
The other thing of the memo that is, uh, it's clear that if you attach a structure to a principal structure, it becomes part of the structure. Rampway, even though you would think, oh, that's just an accessory structure, if attached to the building, it's it becomes part of.
Well, it's just like that.
Yeah, right, right. I often wondered whether somebody could build something. It's kind of like going around the.
Oh.
Yeah, you don't attach it to the structure. You build it three inches away from it. And.
Free floating.
Say, oh, this isn't attached, it's no longer. But anyway.
That's, but seems, I mean, it seems weird to me that someone would have to come to the planning board to get a ramp to access the place for medical reasons.
Yeah, right.
Or, you know, what, what are you gonna say? No? Pay your taxes on, you owe your tax on it, but you can't get in.
Yeah, really.
And that, that thing about allowing that is clearly put into law because. And that, that thing about allowing that is clearly put into law because handicapped people, people getting old and, uh, that they may have been, uh, this way. They had to do it on the front. The, the front door is the only reasonable place to put it. They've got to need a six foot wide ramp because a wheelchair bound or five foot. Have the expansion toward the water. And it's like. Kind of tell somebody they can't get in the camp, uh, because it's violation of the ordinance. So anyway, I agree with you. Are you agree?
And I can use it as a deck because of things tilted. So you're not going to be hanging out as a deck.
Yeah.
What you win about ours, you don't see is the ramp going up and then at the top of the ramp, it's eight by ten platform.
Yeah, yeah, right. That ultimately has launchers on it.
No, I, I spoke to Steve about it and the, the actual landing is quite simple.
Yeah.
By, by.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think the standard size would turn around a little bit, sure.
I think it may already be there.
Okay.
Not sure. So he's actually only adding sixty square feet, four foot by fifteen, what ramp?
Okay, well, I only looked because I, I was thinking I had it in my head that there might even be an exemption of some sort, you know, and, and if it was in statute, then it might preempt our ordinance. And that, you know, we could check that one off. But recently, that's not the case.
I've read.
Although, you know, I did one of those statute searches. Yeah, I mean, that tool with legislative has kind of useless anyway, so.
Whatever. I'll see if I can find it and bring it to the next one.
So, Richard, do we have, um, any, uh, gelling of dates for an expert meeting or two or?
No, nobody's gotten back to me, George, except you and Rich. Sarah says she's available. Did you get back to me on the dates?
No.
I, I'm getting that.
Did you?
And he's not available, maybe.
Yeah.
Because he. And I have not.
You have.
I've stayed out of it until we can talk.
So, uh, I mean, I'm going to meet myself. Whenever I understand your, your timeframe is now, we, we got to serve.
No, that's right.
Oh, I, oh, sorry.
I don't think I'm having surgery.
Not planned.
Yeah, I'm going to be out of town.
So I think that maybe it would be us to just get George, Sarah together, maybe.
Yeah.
You gotta have a.
Got to have three, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, uh, at this point, it would kind of be between you and Rex.
When I get home, I can do Zoom.
Yeah, and that would be consistent with the select board policy because it'd be for a medical reason.
So we can start to do something like that, but I really think that there's no reason why, uh, next week we can't throw three of these on.
Yeah, yeah.
At least. Um, the diplomas may take a little bit of time, um, based on what they're doing. Uh, but you know, what, as you guys heard, some of these could be on one hundred foot.
We didn't approve, prove that previously then, my, they. Yeah, they withdrew it or.
Yeah, they, they do.
Yeah.
If we ever amend our, uh, amendments tonight, our application, George, or something that would be probably good to put on there is what zoning district are you in? Because we, we just most of the time kind of assume it's a residential district and, you know, even this. Thinking it's allowing this, uh, not really expanding this, or somebody within, uh, in the resource protection district, we're not supposed to be expanding, I think, at all. But just it'd be good to know that. Running out of amendments today.
It was harder to amend the form than it is to amend the ordinance.
Right.
To ask the question.
So I just want to make sure to kind of get back to what you were talking about, Richard, about maybe having a meeting next week. Is that correct?
It's going to depend on the availability. I think George, actually Sarah seems to be fairly open, right?
I won't be home until the weekend. Next week.
But we'll do it on Saturday. And I know Craig works all day, so I'm not trying to omit you. I just didn't want to put any pressure on you to feel like you had to volunteer more of your time.
I'm in the same boat as.
Yeah. So hence the reason I'm negatively speaking these three.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't even remember what dates I, I told you I can make it.
Me either. I saved the evening.
Let's go.
So.
One of us.
I think surgery was like the twenty-eighth.
Pardon me?
You, you, you're be going since Sunday, just going Sunday for surgery?
Chest trouble. Get a new valve.
I thought it was on the twenty-eighth.
They moved it.
Oh, I see.
They moved it to May second.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, so, okay.
It'll be next Monday. I think it's Monday.
May second is a Monday. It's two Mondays from now. So, right? Because today's only twenty-first. So next Monday is the twenty-fifth. May second is the Monday following.
Oh.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I will be here next week. Great.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Well, I thought you were still having your surgery next week. That's why.
No, no, okay. I, I can do something next week.
We just got to make sure we have enough time to provide public notice.
Right.
Oh, that's right.
And is that seven days?
George is busy on Tuesday.
What's that?
George is busy Tuesday morning.
That's right.
Well, if you're going to give seven days notice, that means it really can't be before Friday.
Yeah.
Right? So that's the twenty-ninth.
It's kind of close.
So we can look into this, but we can look into the next week in average Zoom.
Let me just offer you this. It's going to be unrealistic to have, um, Rich as a participant too early in the week.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have my calendar at least.
Yeah, uh, just because of the nature of his surgery, he'll be upright and talking.
That's all we need.
Yeah. But the thinking part will be a different story. His focus will be elsewhere.
Are, are you guys out? Friday, is it Friday totally after you guys?
I, I can't remember, um. I, I, I looked at my calendar when I responded to you, but.
Well, if we do it Friday, what time Friday will be?
I don't know because.
Have to be morning for me.
Yeah.
It will be morning for me too. As early as we can. Do that by in the morning.
We can let George look at his calendar.
Why don't I revisit George's email with his availability and then put, so maybe put something together tomorrow, uh, actually not tomorrow. Put something together next week. But then we'd have to decide real quick, right?
No, you have to announce it tomorrow. That's the thing.
No, that's the thing.
You have to announce it tomorrow morning.
I wish you could get Anthony to do it or something like that. If you're out, that would put a watch on this.
Do you have my email handy by chance?
Probably bring it up if you like.
Because then, then we would know if we got three.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't remember.
Well, I can.
Yeah, let's try and at least get a chance to go through some minutes.
Sure.
I already see one thing. Change.
Uh, yeah.
I don't find too much to comment on.
No, he's very thorough.
Well, it makes sense to me, yeah, because I thought it was all the way.
That's what I was thinking too.
Oh, I see. Adjourn. Mr. Seal, one get move adjourned. So we're going to take that one get there. See you on get. That's interesting.
That's funny. All right. Has everybody had a chance to get through the minutes? So, uh, just please speak up so the owl can hear you if you have anything to say, but, uh, any edits? I can see one, I didn't see George Seale listed as a planning board member present and by.
I can't remember much, but I do remember that I was at that meeting.
Yeah, so I'd like to make sure that George Seale is included as a listed member of the planning board who is present. That's my only, if anybody else has something, I know Sarah, you've already indicated something.
Yeah, the moment for adjourn, says Mr. Seal one get. So let's cross out the line, get there.
Got it? Anybody else have any suggested edits? George?
Uh, in terms of remote attendees, Mr. Randall Brakes, the applicant.
Oh. Yep, good point. So to include Randall. Brakes.
We're good for the Friday, though. Twenty-ninth is what we're talking about.
Yeah, Friday the twenty-ninth in the morning.
I saw it. Put it up tomorrow with yourself.
Yep, it'd be seven days.
Yes.
Now, this session will be here.
Yes.
Yeah.
I know Sarah's not there. In person, but I think.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I.
We'll do it.
So. Thank you. Thank you all three for doing, doing an extra.
You know, exactly a year I started doing this like that.
Yeah.
It was, that was the reason why I got in is you guys needed a lot of help. So we signed that exactly a year ago.
Wow.
What do we need to do? Should I?
Well, it's, it's going to be noticed on the website.
Yeah.
So you just basically put it on agenda and put it in the, in the website that is going to be next Friday.
Yep.
You guys have a, um, a number of that you'd like to stick to as far as something you do or?
Take from the simplest ones you have.
Right.
No more than three.
Yeah, I would say three.
Two.
It makes sense.
Will probably take us hour and a half anyway.
And if you get three done next week, that, are there seven or?
Eight.
Eight. So cut it down. Considerably. And then we, I'm assuming more applications will be coming in, but I don't know that.
I stay here. You're right, seven.
Seven. Um.
Yes, they're, they're coming in almost evening, but fortunately a lot of them are non-shore lanes.
All right. So that, that way we know that there's still a load out there for other, other applications to deal with. And eventually we need to talk about our timeline. What are we going to do in May and June, right? But before we get too far, we, we went through the minutes. We're making, I know a squirrel. Um, want to make sure we, we finished wrapping up the minute, so.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Second, all those in, any more discussion? All those in favor? So Craig?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich? I two him in favor, five in favor, none opposed. Thank you very much for that.
Close the meeting. My agenda?
By agenda, I suppose so, because I mean, we talked about it. So I'd take a motion to close the meeting.
Did you want to talk about that?
I did, but it's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay. It's not part of old business?
Guess not. So I'd like to work, I'd like to clean that up a little bit better going forward because it. But want to close the meeting and then we'll get into it, talk about.
I moved to adjourn meeting today.
Thank you. And.
I'll second.
Second to any more discussion, all those in favor? So Craig, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I two him in favor. We're adjourned. Um, now timeline. We need to discuss. Oh, yeah, thanks. So, oops. So I'm going to go leave.
That's still recording.
Oh, honey.